2021, Special Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The purpose of this meeting is discussion of Resolution Serial Number 2130. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away your cell phones. Please note, the meeting this evening will be streamed live through audio and video. We are participating, if you, I'm sorry, if you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard? Here. Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson is absent and excused this evening unless there's objection from the body. Councilmember Brown?
Uh huh.
Councilmember Vlock?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
There is a quorum, Madam Mayor, with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, and Vlock participating in person, and Councilmembers Brown and Harvey participating telephonically.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Stu Graham, will you lead us, please?
It's my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd like to add a new item, 6.2, to the agenda. That item being Committee of the Whole, purposes to discuss potential disbursement of COVID CARES Act. No action will be taken following this.
I'll second that.
Okay. Sarah, did you get that?
I did.
Okay.
I did want to just check in with City Attorney Wells to make sure that this topic is okay to discuss this evening because it's beyond the scope of the notice that we advertised to the public.
Sorry. Um, this is Holly. The competent Bergland, your colleague, and I have to tell you, there's an echo on the phone. So, excuse me if I, I'm sorry, took a leave while here, but, um...
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, echo is going for anybody on the phone, it sounds like.
Oh, okay.
It's really hard to understand, but I don't know if there's anything we can do.
James?
Yes.
Um, James, I don't know what to tell you. Because we have a new system we're trying tonight, so can you just bear with us?
See what I can do.
Okay, thank you. Holly, if you would please continue.
Uh, yes, so, to the extent that we want to talk about CARES Act fund distribution to anyone outside of the city, or Reg, uh, other related, and perhaps if we wanted to talk about other daycare organizations, for example, that might be within an appropriate agenda. But if we're going to talk about something that would say, open up, save, open up distribution to a different class of a group of individuals, the way that we would want to approach that is as foster resolution by one of the council members, something that maybe leads to a special meeting where there's some things proper to anyone who would want to participate in that.
And Holly, this is Stu Graham. So, I'm just looking to have a discussion, not to bring forward anything, I just want to have a discussion in a committee of the whole as opposed to individual council members talking during the comment period, sort of group discussion versus individual input. It's, I don't know if I made that clear or not.
So, if you, I think that in light of that, if you're just going to inform council of your intentions or goals or future action, and that no council would take any action, I don't think we have a lot of risk, um, challenges from that, so that is helpful. Thank you.
Just to confirm, you did say we do not have a lot of risk? I didn't hear that word clearly.
Well, and by that, what I mean is, under the open meeting draft in Title 29 and your code for which you have your agenda and your notice items, and so every time you deviate from that without proper notice, it raises the potential for some to challenge, uh, the consequences of that. But if all you're doing is saying, hey, we're here talking about RED and sort of disbursement of CARES Act funds directly to them, but I'd like to raise a, they call disbursement, so if no action is taken on that, I think that there's not much harm of, uh, there's not much risk in a process either.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, Holly, let me, this is Mayor. Let me make sure I'm understanding this. You are telling us that it is okay for us to go into the Committee of the Whole to discuss other than the Thread assistance, as long as no action is taken?
Yes, if you go into any of the whole, talk about the resolutions of four councils, and there are comments from council members that there are additional disbursements of CARES Act funds that they want to raise or discuss, there is room to do that so long as no action is taken. And when I say no action, council wants to be very careful that they're not getting sort of a informal direction, because here that would be a problem. So, yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Short answer.
Sarah, are you okay with this? Okay. Yes.
Councilmember Graham, will you please restate the motion?
Yes, ma'am. So, I move that we add a new item to the agenda, item 6.2, uh, which is to Committee of the Whole to discuss potential uses for CARES Act funding, and no action will be taken following this committee discussion.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes. Okay. Okay. In my opinion, we have to be very careful in discussing action to be taken, that we don't, that you guys don't imply an action to be taken. Is that what everybody understood? Mr. Graham?
No, that's what I understood.
Okay, all right.
We'll try to be visual since we have this new.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call vote, and this is to add a new business item, 6.2, to, for the council to enter a Committee of the Whole to discuss potential uses for CARES Act funds. Councilmember Harvey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Brown, Vlock, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Johnson is absent.
Okay. Okay. Now, is there an objection to the approval of the agenda as amended? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are on to public participation. The next on the agenda is persons to be heard. You have three minutes. If you, you have a sign-in sheet?
I do. Um, Sarah, what about Stephanie? Is she on the phone? She's, okay.
Okay. You have three minutes, and Stephanie Bergland is the CEO of Thread. Stephanie, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am here.
Would you please state your name?
Yes. This is Stephanie Bergland, the CEO of Thread. Thank you to the chair and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify regarding the City of Wasilla Care Resources. Thread is a 35-year-old private nonprofit that works to progress to increase access to affordable and quality early-care education with specific focus on childcare. I want to start by thanking you for your leadership in the pandemic, and thank you for considering childcare in your conversation this evening about CARES Fund allocation. Childcare has struggled during the pandemic. Licensed childcare programs whose small businesses were already fragile prior to the pandemic are even more now. Their operating costs have increased, at the same time, their revenue has decreased from a temporary lull in demand among families. This was due to keeping, families keeping their children home for safety, and in some cases, due to loss of employment or changes of employment that have caused families to no longer be able to afford childcare. As a result, businesses and communities have realized how important childcare is for their working parents. While working from home is an option for some, this has been highly stressful for parents, and while they're making it work through the necessities of the pandemic, work from home while teaching and caregiving is not sustainable long term. We know that families have been returning to work in schools, and there is and will be more demand for childcare. Licensed childcare programs operate on a thin margin. They count on full enrollment, that private tuition, to pay their expenses. During COVID, without that steady revenue, they were stressed to afford new mitigation costs such as PPE, cleaning supplies, additional materials, and games for caring for smaller group sizes, and things such as distance toys and games. There were increased costs with adding staff due to illness, absences, and smaller group ratios, adding staff training to ensure staff self-safety care and time for mitigation planning and implementation. While childcare's been extremely resilient and adaptable during COVID, their businesses are still struggling. In a recent survey of providers, over 56% responded from, from Wasilla stating that they're concerned about needing to close in the next six to 12 months. The number one need is additional financial support. There's opportunity for your city to provide financial support, and Thread encourages you to do what you can to support childcare. We're in a position to partner with you and have experience distributing COVID relief dollars, and can replicate this process confidently on behalf of the City of Wasilla. I'm happy to answer any questions and available, and have available to be a resource for them. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions, please?
Madam Mayor, could we keep Ms. Bergland online, though, just a little bit longer, just in case questions do come up?
Uh, Ms. Bergland, can you stay online with us during the discussion on your Resolution 2130?
Yes, thank you to the mayor. I am available until about 6:50 this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. And next is Erin Clements. Please state your name, and you've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you for having me. My name is Erin Clements. I am the Operations Director at CCS Early Learning. For a little bit of history, we operate five childcare centers, two of which are within Wasilla City limits. We are about 130 employees, and we have been in operation for over 50 years now, so excited about that. We primarily operate head start and early head start programs, and then additionally, we do before and after, after care programs as well. And thank you for considering this opportunity. As you are well aware, we've all come to realize how important and necessary childcare providers are, how essential they are, not only for the growth and development of our young children, but also for getting parents back to work, helping our economy continue to thrive. And so, that's been on our mind, that's been on your mind, and we appreciate that. Additionally, I would guess that most of you know somebody who has had difficulty accessing childcare over the last two years, either you yourself or someone you know, and that's kind of been a theme with, with most childcare providers during this pandemic. We have all struggled, and particularly with staff shortages. Recruitment retention has been a challenge, and in a given year, just as an example for CCS, we might have two to three, maybe five positions open, and we're running at over 20 positions open that we're actively recruiting for. So, that's been a big challenge for all local childcare providers. Other challenges that we've had are enrollment due to staff shortages, lack of substitute teachers, COVID mitigations that we all have to keep. Our enrollment for children is down about 50%, and, and that's fairly common. And so, what that means is a lot of families aren't getting the services that they need, and it's preventing them from work or other things that they need to manage. I would say that many have had lost revenue. As an example, our before and after care fee-for-service programs on a, on a pre-pandemic year would bring in about $600,000, and that's been cut in half since the, since the pandemic. It's really important to know, though, that CCS, we do receive federal grants as well as state grants, and we have had lots of support from, from local grant makers. So, we really want to advocate for not only us, but also those providers that don't have access to grants, not being a, as not being a nonprofit. Additionally, we really want to advocate for Thread. They're a great known entity in the, in the early childhood field. They have the expertise, knowledge, and ability to help this materialize, to help this happen. And so, once again, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, please read the next item of business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item of business is Resolution Serial Number 2130, awarding a COVID-19 relief and recovery grant in the amount not to, in an amount not to exceed $750,000 to Thread for Assistance to Childcare Facilities Program.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2130?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Vlock and seconded by Councilmember Graham to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2130. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Colleen Leonard-Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I do want to divulge that my husband Ted does work for Chigak Children's Services here in Wasilla. My understanding is that he will not be a recipient of any of the funds if they, if they do receive it through the CARES Act money, but I did want to make sure that that is announced here to the council and to administration.
And then, Madam Mayor, if you would allow, I would like to ask for two amendments in the staff report and the resolution, please. In looking at the staff report, Resolution 2130, I would like to, um, I'd like to take away the third paragraph in the staff report, um, just with the concept that, um, you know, I don't believe the city needs to articulate that we will possibly have $2 million left to then give back to the State of Alaska. It's not December 31st yet, so we really don't know exactly how much may be going back. So, I think it's just premature to have that in a resolution. And so, Madam Mayor, I'd like to have that removed, and then in the resolution itself, I would like to have in the resolution line 19 removed, and same concept. We don't know that we are going to be giving any money back, so to have that in a resolution, I think is premature. I think there's enough information in the resolutions that, that certainly ties in with what our intent is for the Threads Act grant. And so, if council would, would allow me to amend that, I think that would be helpful for, as we move forward.
So, just to be clear, Councilperson Sullivan Leonard, you're looking at strike lines 19, 20, and 21?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I thought I did give that motion. Requested to amend.
I will second that amendment.
Okay. It has been moved by Councilmember Leonard and seconded by Councilmember Graham to amend serial, Resolution Serial Number 2130. Would you call the roll, please?
So, this is on the staff report and the resolution, to strike the third paragraph in the staff report, and to strike lines 19 through 21 in the resolution.
Isn't that?
Yes.
Two separate things, and the second question would be, is, we're not staff, can we amend the staff report?
Why not?
The staff report is from them to us, as opposed.
I know, but it's still communication to the public.
If there's objection, we can make each motion separately. Take them together.
Holly, you want to weigh in?
I do want to, I think the motion has stated to the resolution, I would teach that I, that a staff report is in a specific place, whereas purpose is not a specific practice engaging, only because it's a limitation to council that reflects that.
Um, Ms. Wells, Ms. Wells, um, this is, Sarah, stand if I'm so sorry, but I don't know if it's our new system or if you're just cutting out, um, but we didn't hear what you said. Are you suggesting that we amend the resolution only?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Madam Clerk, I, I would object to that because you want things to be uniform, whether it's a staff report and resolution. So, if you have one thing saying one thing, and the other is not amended, then it's contrary to what your intent was in the resolution. So, I guess maybe I can ask administration if they mind it being amended?
Holly?
Mayor, can you hear me now in this clutter?
Yeah, this is better.
Okay, so, the reason why we don't do that is there will be times, hopefully not too many, but where staff reports will address facts or circumstances surrounding a resolution or an ordinance that may represent that differ from a council committee adopt or decide. And that is all part of the specific record, and it's sort of, it arises from the have a administration and the council, right? So, we want to preserve that difference, and it doesn't reflect the legislative intention for council members. I think by striking that provision in the resolution, that stays, that accomplishes the goal that Councilmember Sullivan Leonard.
Okay, so you're saying not to strike on the staff report, but you can strike on the amendment?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Colleen?
Madam Mayor, I will withdraw the amendment for the staff report, and then test that the resolution continue to be amended.
Okay. There, Mr. Graham, do you still second the motion?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay. The motion has been made by Councilmember Leonard and seconded by Councilmember Graham to, to amend the resolution by striking what numbers?
Lines 19 through 21.
Lines 19 through 21. Okay. Is there discussion? Again. Hearing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Graham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Vlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, that motion, the primary amendment passes unanimously with Councilmember Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Brown, Vlock, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Johnson is absent.
Okay. Is there further discussion on Resolution Serial Number 2130 as amended?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Graham?
Discussion would be more questions to staff, particularly Mr. Tankersley, Finance Director. At the last meeting, you expressed some concern about how to put together the memorandum of agreement with Thread regarding legality of spending the funds. Were you able to resolve those questions?
Yeah, through the, to the council, Councilmember Graham, I do have a draft memorandum agreement, hopefully to get to Thread. I was hoping to get the draft to him today, actually, to get their eyes on it, but was unsuccessful in doing that. Hopefully, I'll have this resolved, obviously contingent on, on tonight, sending that over to them tomorrow.
And if that memorandum of agreement is signed, then the funds would become immediately available to them, and they would have until the 31st of December to expand or commit those funds, is that correct?
That is correct, and, and in thorough conversation with Stephanie, and she's been fantastic to work with, we resolved many of the questions, concerns, what have yous, when it comes to the CARES Act funding, as expressed in Thread's letter to council. It satisfied many of the requirements CARES Act funds have. And then, as far as the timing goes, if administration is successful working with Thread tomorrow to get that memorandum of agreement completed and back, that allows us Thursday and, you know, get that funds to Thread either Thursday or Friday at the latest, so they can proceed what they need and the time they need to get that money dispersed.
Thank you, sir. And second question for the administration, is this like Thread Inc.? I mean, most of these nonprofits have more than one word in their name. Is it Thread Inc.? Is it Thread, what is?
I've never heard it called Thread Inc. All I've ever heard was, Troy, is it Thread Inc.?
Stephanie's on the phone still, so she.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Stephanie, you want to answer that for Councilmember Graham? Stephanie, you want to answer that for Councilmember Graham?
Yes, through the chair, thank you, Councilman Graham. Our legal name is Childcare Connections Incorporated, and we do business as Thread.
So do we need to mention Childcare Connections Incorporated on the, or are we...
Well, they're doing business as Thread, so that will take care of everything.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Anybody on the phone that has anything? Hearing none, roll call vote, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on the adoption of Resolution Serial Number 2130 as amended. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Johnson is absent.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we are moving on to 6.2. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the next item of business.
Item number 6.2, this is a committee of the whole item to discuss potential uses for the CARES Act funding. We need a motion to enter Committee of the Whole.
Madam Mayor, I move to enter Committee of the Whole.
I'm sorry, before we do that, Stephanie, thank you so much for staying on. But we have passed the resolution, and so, you know, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. We look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you. Okay.
Stephanie Burgland from Thread has left.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Graham moves to enter Committee of the Whole.
I'll second that.
There has been a motion to move to the Committee of the Whole by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Leonard. If there's no objection, hearing no objection, we are now into the Committee of the Whole. And Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me this amendment to the agenda here. We've talked the last few meetings about the remaining CARES Act funds. You know, as we're all aware, there was, you know, in excess of $18 million, getting to the city under the CARES COVID first tranche, whatever, not first tranche, but the first of the COVID programs that the government had come up with. And that was to help, you know, mitigate COVID and to assist small businesses and others with the effects that COVID has had on those small businesses. So when we first came up with Phase 1, there were some restrictions applied based on the size of a business, the amount of money that they had brought in during the year, the ownership of the business, and some other things, because we had a concern that, you know, a bunch of this money was going to be used, and we would run out of money. Well, we're now down to the end of the program, and we haven't run out of money. So while our conservative estimates were probably rightly taken in, now is the time to look at that again. As you can see from the staff report that was given today, there's if Thread uses the entire $750,000, there's going to be about $1.25 million left, which we can use to assist small businesses and other nonprofits that had, that were impacted negatively by CAREERS that have not yet been made whole or reimbursed to the point where we can reimburse them under the CARES Act. One of the things that I would like us to consider is to ask the staff to look at, at the next meeting, perhaps, ask the staff to be prepared to discuss, you know, what amount of money would be made available if we went back to the Phase 1, 2, and 3 applications from small businesses that were declined based on the technicalities that were later dropped, you know, in the further phases of the Act. Because as we went on through the phases, you know, we kind of kept opening the window a little bit, and opening the window a little bit, and opening the window a little bit. So essentially, what my concern is, is that we have excluded some businesses that should qualify, and in other areas, other municipalities, other boroughs would qualify under the Act based on our concerns about the amount of money that was available. I'm not going to say we did anything wrong. I'm not going to say we did anything right. But I can say we need to continue to move forward, and we, and we, the last thing we want to do is to have money available for small businesses to help them offset the negative effects of COVID, and for us at the end of the year to say, ah, sorry, we ran out of time. Therefore, we have to send the money back and let somebody else spend it someplace else. We need to do everything we can to assist our small businesses. And I'm hoping that the, you know, over the next, whatever time period, until we can discuss that again, this again, that the council members will look at those restrictions. The staff will make us aware, perhaps, of how many businesses were turned down and what the economic effect would have been. You know, if we funded that, what level of funding were we talking about? Were we talking about $100,000? Were we talking about $50,000? Were we talking about $750,000? So we know what we're talking about. And that we also take another look at a round of, additional round of PPE funding. Because the PPE funding not only included, you know, masks and gloves and fun little windows that everybody is sick of looking at, but it also included a deep cleaning of facilities, you know? I mean, so you could wash whatever remains of the virus were in your building to make things happen. And so I think we need to look at how those funds are going to be expended and find a way to expend those funds. And I would like to hear from the city at some point, you know, that we have been reimbursed for 100% of what we can legally be reimbursed for. Because if it comes down to the end of it, and there's $150,000 left, and it turns out we could have asked for another 2% or 5% or whatever for expenditures for our public safety folks, then we should definitely capture that money, which is already there, already granted to us, has already been spent by the federal government with the intent of giving it to the city of Wasolo. We need to take a look at that, and we need to make sure that even if it takes a December 31st special council meeting, that we make that happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there other...? Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I don't know the different phases of what the city did for disbursement for the CARES Act funds. So, Madam Mayor, if I could have Troy just give me a quick overview, you know, when it came to CARES Act funds and the first amount of grants went out, what were the parameters for the grants? What type of grants were given? And then, on the second phase, kind of what happened within that framework as well? Just so I can kind of get it in my head exactly what the city did. Now we're here.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan Leonard. I kind of wish I would have been giving a heads up on this one, because then I could have outlined it better for you. What I can tell you, because I don't have, you know, start and finish to each phase dates, parameters in front of me, that kind of. But what I can tell you is requirements under the CARES Act and the five phases that we did, nothing changed as far as the requirements. We didn't take CARES Act on Phase 1 and then turn around in Phase 2 and say, oh, well, something changed, so we're going to widen the parameters or increase the net, if you will. The injections associated to businesses that applied, whether it be for PPE or for economics, had parameters within them built for specifically. If it was economic, we have the luxury, because of sales tax, to justify and assess whether a business has an economic loss just simply by what they're reporting in the sales tax dollars. When we did that, I think with Phase 1 and 2, ELDI was part of the picture. At the front end of all that, that was classified alone. It was later turned around, the federal government turned around and forgave those. Said now that's a benefit. So then we had to take that into a funding source. So businesses that, on the front end, got assistance from us, whether it be under economics, no longer could hit economics because now it's another federal source that they've got. And that doesn't change today. The only thing that changes between the five phases, besides possibly the amounts that were given, is the timeframe at which the window was looked at for economics. In Phase 1, we had a shorter timeframe to look at. When you go to Phase 2, it widened the net. When you went to Phase 3, it widened the net even further, on and so on and so forth. When we talk about PPE, all those phases, all five phases that went out in there, you know, unless, unless it was just the reasons what they were spending money for didn't qualify under CARES Act. Obviously, you can't go buy land or new building or things like that with CARES Act funding. So if that's what they specified, it's going to get rejected, right? So, but in, under most cases, unless the application wasn't completely filled out or that kind of thing, most of those applications were satisfied. It's the economic side that, especially with the ELDI portion of it that got built in, that would get people over the edge and would have to deny it. The timeframe, Councilmember Colleen Sullivan Leonard, I can't really give you... I can tell you that there was five phases. There was three plus, almost $4 million combined in all those five phases. You shoot out like 200 and, I want to say 250 approximately businesses that benefited from those five phases. Couldn't not tell you the stats as far as who was rejected, why they were rejected. That's not something that finance took time to look at. And certainly, if we were to go back and look at those applications that were rejected, it would take a long time because we have several boxes of applications to vet through. That's a dangerous move to go back in time and look at applications back in time and make assumptions based on something then versus something now. It would require a testament of the business. Do they need it? Don't they need it? All the same vetting, the economics, all of that would still have to be done. And make no mistake, none of these phases could be pulled off, you know, a two, three, four week timeframe. They take, they take a couple months to get the word out, get the application out, get them filled in, get the proper documentation back to us, get the attestments out, the checks done, all of that. It's, the administration to this stuff is time consuming. It's not a quick turnaround to any of these phases. So I caution council, if we go back in time and start digging up the graveyard of why people weren't, why they didn't get a check, and then just assume, if you will, that we're now giving them one based on whatever reason, that's a dangerous move to do without that business sitting in front of us saying, I have an economic need today, or filling out some application or some form for us to attest. That is the basis of CARES Act. CARES Act requires us to vet this information out. It's federal funding. And all federal funding has this requirement to it, in some fashion or another.
Right, and I'm absolutely well aware of that. Some of the parameters that the city was looking at then, when the discussion was dispersing for an economic grant, it seemed that the desire was to help the small businesses. And was there a parameter then where it was like $0 to $5,000, $0 to $10,000? Where do you go on that for how much you would give to each business that applied and followed the requirements?
And for PPE and economics, I couldn't give you the thresholds off the top of my head right now. The other caveat to that was brick and mortar versus a corporate firm, say. We talked about businesses like the big box stores, for example. Fred Meyer's got a brick and mortar here, but certainly a national firm. And part of the state requirement, and has been part of the state's requirement, it has to be brick and mortar in the state of Alaska. That concept, so when you have a, you might have a brick and mortar store in our boundaries, but the corporate office is in the lower 48. You can attest to the fact that the corporate office didn't get CARES funding, ELDI funding, PPP funding, on and so on and so forth, and funnel that money down to its, to its branches, if you will. And so that's why you didn't see funding to big box stores or the Fund Center or that kind of thing. Because that, that came off even the state of Alaska did that, so.
Nikki?
Madam Mayor, I was on the council during all five phases, and I thought I still had the packet. There, there is definitely documentation on each phase, and we had a packet. And it's, like I said, I thought I still had it in there. But that probably, maybe next meeting, or, not that we have a lot of time, but we could probably dig that up, and that was very informative. And I'm in agreement with Troy in that I think we could put it all out there again, but those businesses would have to reapply. I, I would just think it would just be too many man-hours to go digging themselves. But if they know it's available and they think they qualify now, I think that, that would be great. But like I said, I wish I had that packet. I'd carry it around forever.
Madam Mayor, perhaps the clerk could look through the minutes of those meetings and provide us with the packets that were approved for those five phases? And just email it to each of the city councilmembers? So, so just for our research purposes and discussion purposes.
Let me put my thoughts in this, if I may. Today is the last day of November, tomorrow's December 1st. And for us to be able to even consider putting a packet out there, it would have to come before council on the 13th? Because that's the only, I know we can have special meetings, I get that. But to do this, you've got to hire somebody to, to do this. The people's got to apply, and this is going to take, they'll be applying till December 31st, and here we are. And I am here to tell you, I appreciate all, though sometimes I've argued with him over some things that I really didn't understand that I thought I understood. But Troy has kept me from wearing an orange jumpsuit. And so has he, because neither one of us look good in orange. So, I mean, there is a lot of parameters on this money. And we are working with nonprofits right now, as you can tell on this, to, because they have an easier way, a nonprofit can disperse money a lot easier than the city can. So we are working with nonprofits to make sure that, or put forth our best effort to not have any money left. Now, whether that's accomplished or not, I don't know. What if Thread does not, let's say they only give away $500,000? What if THRED does not, let's say they only give away five hundred thousand. That leaves two hundred and fifty thousand that'll come back to the city. And we won't get that back until, they've got till the third first of December. And I'm going to tell you right now, folks, I'm not going to jail for none of y'uns. And I don't expect Troy to. Now, if you guys want to sign on the bottom line and wear orange, that's up to you.
Mayor Detroit, how did we come up with that amount of money for THRED? I mean, could we have given them a remainder, or could we have made some effort to disperse that money?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand the question. Talking about how we came up with the seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, why would, why would?
I'll be honest with you, the seven fifty was arbitrary. It was a starting point, you know, just kind of, just started that way, and it just kind of locked as far as, at the seven hundred and fifty, it was, it was based on the number of eligible seats, if you will, or slots. I remember how Stephanie classified it, I think it was slots. And ironically, it came up to nine hundred and ninety-nine if you added up all those slots. So anyway, I just, you know, in my head, I was thinking, well, it was a thousand bucks, that's nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, is that too much? Is that too little? You know, what's realistic, that kind of thing. And so it was just kind of a conversational piece, if you will. And we kind of settled around the seven hundred and fifty mark. Timing was critical to get a title for legislation, so we locked in the seven hundred and fifty mark. That's when the ten thousand dollar administrative cost came into impact, which unfortunately I couldn't make it, seven hundred and sixty thousand, so I had to just take the ten thousand off the seven fifty. So as you saw in the staff report, instead of an even seven hundred and fifty dollars per slot, it drops it to like seven hundred and forty-one some change per slot. That's kind of how it really was, an arbitrary kind of thing. And as my conversations with Stephanie was, you know, it's up to THRED to vet this out, you know. If business, one of the childcare facilities could come in and say, you know, "I only have eight slots. My goodness, I don't need seven hundred and forty dollars per slot. I'm just looking for five thousand bucks, whatever, I'm just throwing that out there." The business doesn't have to take that full amount, and they may not want to take that full amount, but it's available to them through THRED and to vet that process. So they may, or they may not, be able to dish out that full amount. You can't force these businesses to take the money. They don't want it.
Our mayor mentioned other nonprofits. Do we have any other nonprofits in the works for the remainder of that money?
Not right now, no. Not to my knowledge.
We have reached out about the home test kits, and we're waiting on replies.
Sorry, and to report to that, Mayor, so just before this meeting, that's why I was a little bit, almost doubted it would be late. I got a call from the supply that provided test kits to the Matsu Health Foundation. He's going to send me an email in the morning with some better accurate cost information, that kind of thing. And I know the state used the same supplier, Matsu Health used it, I think the borough even used it, but we'll have a better understanding tomorrow as to what kind of costing that is. And my understanding too is a big cost is the freight to get them here. THRED paid fourteen thousand dollars to air that stuff here. So it's, it's all about the pallet size and whatnot, so we'll have an understanding there, and then I'll continue my conversation with Elizabeth Ripley on possibility of distribution. So if we, you know, throwing another, we're out here, if we had fifty thousand test kits show up all of a sudden, how are we going to distribute them in our boundaries, right? That's what the CARES funding does too, it's talking about our boundaries. So we get that out there, you know? So that's another, another thing.
Mayor, Holly, when it's appropriate, I would like to share some comments for council.
I'm sorry?
Holly, would you please restate?
I just want to, when it's appropriate, I'd like to share some comments for council.
Counsel, you ready to listen to the city attorney?
Sure.
Okay, you can go now, Holly.
I just want to be sure the council is aware of the process, vulnerability to that comes with committee considerations, I'm either at a meeting or in a reservation on the issue. First, the council had several phases, and with each phase, there were very clear criteria, notice provisions that were called, discussions with council regarding safety status, the definition for brick and mortar, and the frequently asked questions for the Matsu program. I think that, that came up in phase four, and phase two, and the city adjusted its frequently asked questions to make sure that they were communicating with the public regarding criteria and the basis for them. So while, while Phil's program to date has been operated in a very transparent, appropriate, and reasonably balanced way, if the city wanted to say, I'll take two examples on our preliminary discussion, if they wanted to go back and look at applicants that were denied grants, doing that without looking at applicants who chose not to apply, who might have said, "I'm not going to submit an application because I don't need this criteria" to discriminate against them and not involve them and include them in what is essentially a new phase would be very problematic. So the other option is that you're rolling out essentially a new phase through your grants on, through this program. Then you want it to be uniform and consistent with all of them that you took previously. So you want to make sure you follow notice requirements, the application process, and those, each of those phases took several months, and I just want everyone to be aware of that significant risk that comes with rolling out a program in academic short run down.
Madam Mayor? Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
So Holly, with that, I appreciate that information, but I guess in my thoughts here, coming on to council as I have, I mean, there should be kind of a plan in place and program in place so that if we are wanting to do Phase Six to get funds out to our small businesses, you know, maybe the grants previously for economic hardship was between zero and ten thousand. We should have those applications in our database, so that way, all you would have to do is pull them up, have it on Excel spreadsheet of some type, be able to give notice out, be able to, you know, check to see if there is an increased need in our community. I've heard from several businesses that they didn't notice the city had leftover money, and they could use ten thousand dollars, they could use twenty thousand dollars. They have experienced economic hardship like you can't imagine, closing down their businesses, their bread and butter. So I guess my point is, you know, within this discussion here, the city should have a plan in place. You should have, applications shouldn't be in a cardboard box. They should be in the system, it should be ready to go, you should be able to pull up those businesses that have applied, maybe been rejected, and then take another look. I mean, it, it's really difficult for me to come here and to see that there's money sitting here, when we have businesses that are continuing to feel that hardship, and if we can help them, we should.
Madam Mayor, if I could direct another question to Mr. Tankersley. First, thank you for the information. Secondly, I mentioned during my first oration, as it were, reimbursement of the city for public safety costs. Many cities, municipalities, organizations throughout the state have captured essentially a hundred percent of their public safety costs under some CARES Act funding. What were the parameters that you used? Because I'm assuming that you set the parameters for reimbursement of public safety cost, essentially the cost of running the police department. What percentage of that cost did you attribute to COVID? And was that strictly based on a, I hate to call it an arbitrary number, because I've never heard you do anything arbitrary in your life, but, but, I mean, was it much like THRED, you just had to come up with a percentage and went with that? I mean, could, could we adjust the percentage that you had in your mind of what we were spending, you know, based on COVID, to recapture one hundred percent of the available funds?
Through the mayor, Councilman Graham. So when CARES Act funding started, there's been many gyrations, if you will, from Treasury about frequently asked questions. This has been, on the front end, a very popular question, if you will, with a lot of ambiguity in that question. And there was a lot of municipalities that read it like we did. There's, you know, if you have an officer that's directly related, impacted into COVID, right into that scenario, can that time be countable? Yes. We didn't have an issue with that. What about the admin or the police officers that aren't, or dispatch, for example? Do they? And it was the city's position and the take on that question was, no, it didn't appear like CARES funding. So it wasn't until peaceful sister city of Anchorage decided to do this building purchase, if you recall. And the AG came out and answered this question for us, and specifically said that, under the CARES Act, that you are allowed to take public safety personnel costs and reimburse yourselves for that money. Let that money drop to your bottom line, and then if you want to go buy a building, then use the money out of your bottom line to go buy, build that building, because there's no stipulations from CARES.
So given that?
Not that we're going to go build a building from this, but the point of all that was, it answered everyone's questions, that in fact, public safety dollars are reimbursable. And so from the start of this, the city is reimbursing itself for all the public safety dollars. We're not only looking at public safety dollars, we look at, clerk's office buys these handy wipes, and they swipe it on a P card, and it comes through my office, and I'm reconciling the P card, and they code it to supplies. I turn around and change the coding to CARES Act, things like that. We're always looking for stuff like that. So my office is doing a fantastic job in capturing all the costs that they can capture to reimburse what we need to reimburse.
And I'm not questioning that, please pardon me if I inferred that you weren't. But the bottom line is, from what you just said, a hundred percent of public safety costs could be reimbursed. Our public safety budget for, since COVID started, is pushing, what, close to twenty million dollars now?
Only personnel, operations.
So have we, are we set up to recapture one hundred percent since April, but April before, whatever?
Since the start of the CARES Act funding, when that parameter started, that's when we've captured all the way back into FY twenty, we've been capturing public safety dollars.
James Harvey.
Have left.
Runs, give or take, a half million dollars a month.
And at the end of December, obviously, we won't know what those personnel costs are until sometime in January. Will we, will we be able to go back and recapture Decembers, or we can, or can we do that based on an assumption of six hundred thousand dollars for December, or?
The December report isn't due until the end of January, but it's expenditures of December that were captured, right? It doesn't just cut off, and you, they'll have to report it, and we'll capture that, and we'll reimburse ourselves for it.
And after that reimbursement, we'll still be looking at the same number that you put in your staff report here?
No, it's going to change. Yeah, it'll change. Right now, I'm asking.
Given, given what we agreed to with THRED this evening, to help with childcare centers, and then if we recapture whatever that amount is for public safety labor at the end of December, where do you think we would be? Let's, let's assume THRED uses one hundred percent of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, you know, your estimate of labor for public safety is used, where would we be with balance available of CARES Act funding, do you think, if, if nothing else changes?
So just using a half million dollars even on public safety for the next, so October, November, and December still need captured. It's a million and a half dollars, plus the seven fifty for THRED, plus the two forty for Wasi that just went out. That's going to give us roughly into the neighborhood of about one point five, one point five, eight-five.
Taking the rough edges off there. So, so we'll be one point five eight-five million, essentially, that the council and the administration should be looking at as available under the CARES Act funding, or is projected to be available at this point at the end of the year, is that correct?
It's available, yeah. If, yeah, if there was a plan in place to spend one point five today and it fell under the CARES Act, we, we would.
Right, well, I'm just asking what number we're, we're trying to get straight in our heads.
As far as the, you know, like the test kits, that could be, you know, it's twenty, it's eleven dollars per test. The way they capture that is eleven dollars per test, but there's two tests in a box, so it's twenty-two dollars per box.
Plus?
That adds up pretty quick.
Or six dollars shipping, so.
You burn a million dollars on fifty thousand dollar allotment, and they're usually in fifty-five, fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar, I said, fifty thousand boxes in a, in an allotment.
Right.
A million dollars right there.
So for me to understand clearly the restrictions of the CARES Act funding, the money needs to be committed by the thirty-first of December, you know, and action taken to commit that. So even if they delivered the test kits on the twenty-fifth of January, we'd be just fine, but we don't have to distribute them by the twenty-fifth of January, we just have to accept them by the?
The order needs to be placed and funds expended. If the goods have not been received, but they've been ordered, that's a supply issue, and CARES Act funding talks about that, that's fine, but the funds have to be expended before the whole thing is ordered.
But if we don't have a solid plan in place through the Matsu Health Foundation, or whomever, you know, the school district, whoever, to be able for persons living in the city of Wasilla, businesses operating within the city of Wasilla, to get those test kits, that's not going to be a significant hurdle, would that be correct?
If we were able to, expending the funds is simple, to get them down to the supplier.
Right.
That's just a ACH or wire next day, whatever. Put it on the air, it comes within a day or two. And if Matsu Health had a plan in place to just, for distribution, I don't see why it couldn't be distributed. They distributed twenty-six thousand issued in less than two weeks.
Right.
And those are gone.
But there's no requirement for them to distribute it by a certain date? I mean, if it took them two months to distribute it, it wouldn't be?
We would have captured our part, right? We ordered them, we received them, we got them in the hands of Matsu Health.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the clarification.
And Matsu Health does not have any test kits left. They're out.
Madam Mayor, could I go back to my question? I, it was never answered by Legal or by Troy, and I really just wanted to see, with all the applications- with all the applications that the city received for particular PPE or grants or economic hardship funds, did you put that in a database? I can't imagine it's in a cardboard box. It's got to be in some kind of a system that you've been able to calculate and...
We did not put it in a database because these packets that we received, I think, it's asking for information, profit and loss statements or backup data from the sales tax system. There's a lot of attachments and assessments that come with the application. It's not just an online, fill in a few questions and sign it. So these applications were not electronically captured and that sort of thing.
And I will, to add on to Troy, or to briefly answer your question, Councilman Leonard, is we have hired an IT director. And so, I mean, you were here, how many years ago, as a council member?
2015, 2016.
So we've come a long way since then, but we have not got totally automated. We work on it daily. So in the future, whatever the future may hold for us, we will be automated.
So Madam Mayor, let me ask you this, then if I could. If we've got a little under a million dollars left over, how can we get it out to our small businesses that are hurting, that may still need assistance?
I don't know, I can't answer that question, I don't know. But I'd like to know who these small businesses are.
Small mama pops all over Wasilla.
Well, when I shop, nobody says anything to me, that's all I can say. That don't mean that they're not out there, whatever, but, I mean, here we are, December the 1st. Like I said, we cannot hire somebody. And Holly said, the attorney said, it would be a phase six. Well, time you get phase six implemented, it's going to be the end of January. And that's a month over. And again, I don't look good in orange.
Well, I appreciate the drama of not, of saying you don't look good in orange. I don't appreciate the fact that we're not looking for actions that we can accomplish as opposed to looking at it and saying, well, you know, it's too late now. I think the questions we need to be asking and the questions the council needs to be looking for answers for is what can we do? Not what can't we do, what can we do?
The administration and the finance department, we have reached out to several different nonprofits because at this juncture, this is where it needs, it will, it can go. And so when you work with them and you do the best you can do, that's what we've done. It's not like that we are sitting here hoarding money, because we're not.
Well, it's not our money if it...
It ain't my money to start with.
If we don't spend it, it goes away. I mean, it's not, it's not like we're hoarding anything, but we can do better, I think.
Maybe we could have, I don't know. But like I said, I still say that as a city, the CFO, Troy, has abided by the parameters that the US Treasury set forth for this money. And you say it's drama, I don't think it's drama. I think because Troy and me are the only two are on the line legally for this money. You guys are not, we are.
Madam Mayor, I know we ended phase five and we never went to a phase six. And that's been a long time ago. And even on the council, I'm not quite sure why unless, I do remember something about maybe our applications had dwindled. We thought we had captured everyone and it was not going to be a productive use of time to do another phase unless it was something totally different. We were kind of, it would have had to been out there and it, I don't think any other parameters had been approved. That's what I'm kind of remembering that so we didn't go forward. I don't know what you're remembering, Troy, or...
Yeah, there's a few speculations on that. So phase five, yeah, phase five ended during the time when the cases in Wasilla and state mandates and state mandates were pretty much being lifted and a lot of things were being relaxed. Case counts were coming down and whatnot. And when we moved forward, I mean, I appreciate what the mayor has said. You know, I've gone out in the community and I've asked, you know, businesses too. And it's, you know, it's basically in two, four questions. One, do you need it? I mean, are you hurting? Are you spending money on PPE? And some of them are saying, yeah, I spend money on PPE. Well, come to the city. I mean, let your councilmen know, here's their numbers, that kind of thing. But if they don't, and so I might see them again, hey, you know, but still nothing. So there's been a lot of word of mouth trying to get, from my perspective anyway, and I'm only talking from my perspective, what I've done myself. And, you know, we haven't done a phase six. It's real similar to Wasi, for example. Wasi comes to the council meeting every time we have a council meeting, but yet, Wasi never came at any point that they had a need or even expressed their report the way they did. So I'm glad they did come forward the way they did. And I'm glad that the city was able to support them. But again, and in trying to answer some of councilmember Colleen Sullivan's, how best can we do this? Well, it's a dangerous, it's a dangerous game right now because we're kind of in the 12th hour here and we're on the goal line trying to get the ball across. And there's just, in my opinion, not enough time to do a full-on phase six, get those applications out, get them vetted out accordingly. If I had all my staff and dropped the daily duties of finance and not worry about a budget that has to come forward and all that kind of stuff, yeah, we might be able to accomplish that. But realistically, it's not realistic to try to push this through. What can we do about that? Things like targeting, the nonprofits are easier. Target like Wasi and you can target Thread, although a little more complicated because they've got, as a sub-recipient then, are required to go even further. Undoable depending on timing, but, you know, it's easier to get money into a nonprofit because the nonprofit has a mission. But the mission and the statement of that nonprofit has to still be need-based or economic loss or something to that effect, real similar to what we saw from Wasi. That's what CARES Act funding is going to look for.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Troy, I appreciate that. And I guess, you know, when I was looking to see what Kena did, Soldana, Kenaipnitzlboro, Matsuboro Palmer, I looked to see kind of not only what the phases were that they had, but some of the parameters that they used then for giving money out to the businesses. And so they had one scope of funding that went out. I think it was maybe $0 to $10,000. What they realized that people still had incredible need. They still had money on the table. They went back out to the businesses and said, we're going to open it up again because they didn't want money on the table, right? So they put it out there again and they expanded it out to $0 to $50,000 to make sure that the small businesses or whatever they had for their business perimeter, I don't think they made it just specific for small businesses. I think it was businesses, period. And I, you know, I guess that's what I was hoping for on this because if we only had a perimeter of $0 to $10,000, but we still have money on the table, we should be expanding it out to all businesses as much as we can within the perimeter of our city to the tune of $0 to $50,000 or even more. And I understand what you're saying, that you don't have a system in place with applications in a box. But, I mean, I can have the businesses come and give testimony to council on the hardships that they're feeling, the businesses that they closed. I can certainly do that. But again, you know, I'm trying to look to see what other cities have done, whether the boroughs have done just within our area. And this is tough, this is tough for me to see money on the table. And it's tough for me to hear from businesses, maybe some haven't heard from, I have. So, you know, unless I bring forward a resolution that says I want a grant for this, 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 and this, then I'm picking winners and losers, right? I mean, I'm picking people that I want to give grants to and I don't think the city wants to do that. So again, how can we get money out to the businesses?
So in Thread's package here that was attached to our resolution that's in our packet tonight on page 16 of 19 of our packet, Thread says the use of funds, the money can be used for mental health support for children and employees. Is there anything in the CARES Act that would prevent us from funding some sort of business counseling, you know, to enter into a contract with a consulting firm where businesses could then go to that consulting firm and talk about their issues and their problems and kind of work on ways to adjust their business plan as opposed to trying to work with the city in our six-page application to get a specific amount of money? Is there anything that would prevent us from hiring a consultant to help businesses as opposed to, you know, and obviously they would be businesses that, you know, had some sort of effect from COVID and were inside the city limits and were brick and mortar, whatever the restrictions were before? Is there anything that would prevent us from doing that? And I'm basing that on Thread saying legal use of the fund is to hire a consultant, a mental health consultant.
Thinking out loud, probably, there's probably no reason why a consulting firm couldn't be used. Yet, it's always with the caveat, right? I mean, that consultant absolutely has to, the parameters behind the agreement has to align with need-based economic need, you know, COVID-19 mitigation, whatever that, whatever that is. It can't just be, you know, you're, you got business troubles because you didn't do something economically, you know? I mean, it's, you're not...
Right, but for instance, even just filing taxes next year for the average small business and most businesses, you know, just by the nature of their passion for the business and not for the, not for the administration behind it, are going to have issues with filing taxes. How do I handle the PP, you know, the PPP loan? You know, how do I handle the PPE grant? How do I handle this, how do I handle that? It would seem like it would be money well spent for the city to come forward and say, hey, you know, you can go to XYZ CPA firm and they will answer your questions and the city will pay that bill. They're not going to, they're not going to file your tax return for you, but the city can make sure that you have highly competent financial advice available to you so that you can properly, you know, figure out the effects of COVID and how that affects your taxes and make sure that you don't end up wearing orange with the mayor.
I guess in response to that, I'll be honest with you, I have not, I have not seen that. And I would actually myself have to propose that question to the AG and find out if it's even...
So could you propose that question and get back to...
I would have to, and we've got two pending questions with AG that they haven't even responded to yet. I can't even guarantee that they will respond in a timely timeframe. They have a phone number, but he was leaving a message, you know?
And I understand that, I'm just trying to look for ways...
I'll be happy to pose that question to the AG and see if they get back to us or... Or they haven't responded and it's been a couple of weeks and...
And I appreciate that. What I'm trying to do is not point fingers at anybody. I'm trying to find ways to help small businesses. Thank you.
Aren't we all?
As far as the mental health, Matsu Health Foundation already has that avenue in place. We could talk to Elizabeth about that and see, or Robin, and see if that's feasible.
And I'm not particularly concerned about the mental health. Of course, I am concerned about my own mental health, but I am concerned about, you know, Glenda's hair salon, being able to get competent, you know, tax advice, whereas the normal course of your business might not include ever talking to a CPA over 20 or 30 years.
Oh, I have a bookkeeper and a CPA.
But not all do, but that was the intent on my question.
Yeah, I honestly don't know if you can purchase LEE or accounting services or consulting services for the accounting of CARES funding in a small business. I don't...
Appreciate that, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to exit the committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor, I believe we exit committee of the whole at 7:27 PM.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, we are out of the committee of the whole. 7:28. We are to audience comments. Would you like another three minutes?
I don't think that's necessary. Can I just say thank you for the discussion? It was very moving, actually, in a positive way.
Thank you. Okay. We are on to Madam Deputy Clerk.
Hey, Madam Mayor, we have some, we have more special meetings scheduled on Monday. It's a special meeting, discussion on goals and initiatives. And Tuesday, and then Wednesday's 10 to 10.
Can you say the dates on those meetings, please?
December 6th, December 7th, and possibly December 8th, beginning at 6:00 PM. And if you could let me know if you're going to be participating in person or telephonically, we're going to reach out and try to get the sound system fixed. But we'll have the PowerPoint here again, so it's easier if you attend in person.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Attorney?
No comments, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
No comments, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
No comment, thank you.
Councilmember Vlock?
No comment.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the discussion today, council and administration, I appreciate it. I appreciate testimony from our childcare facilities here in... I appreciate it, and I appreciate testimony from our childcare facilities here in Wasilla, giving good testimony. Madam Mayor, I would like to see if council would support moving forward, in the desire to see if we can issue additional grants out to our business members. I don't know how to make a motion on that, I just, we talked about it in the committee of the whole, I'd like to know if council would support me in this effort, to do a fast-track to get applications out, kind of when you look at Thread, they've got three or four-page piece, it comes in, it could be electronic, it could be repeat, small businesses that are looking for additional help. I'd like to know if council would support me on that.
Yes.
This is, this is Holly. So, while we were discussing, I think we went a little bit outside the scope of the agenda, you know, getting past, and we're just worried about, because we need to take action. If a council member went forward with something like this, and I think it's appropriate enough that it would be, would need to sponsor a resolution, or put it on an upcoming agenda for new business, so that the public can be part of that conversation, and be aware of what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Holly.
Right, and, and I appreciate that, I just, I can't move forward if I don't get support from council, I'm not gonna throw something out there and just have it drawn, so, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council members, for involving us in this discussion. I do think it's important that we get as much help to our small businesses as we can, also as much help to any affected group or individual that we can, to expend the cares act money that we've had for over a year now, so I think that's drastically important. As to councilperson Sullivan Leonard's idea, I think that's a great idea, I'd love to see something that we could fast-track and use to get funding out there. I think it would be unconscionable for us to not think outside the box, to not work at the edge of the envelope, to try and make this funding available to those who could use it in a positive manner. And if that means that we need to push a little bit harder, then I'm certainly for that, I'm not saying that city staff is underworked by any, by any stretch of the imagination, I know that's not true, but, you know, if we need to bring on a consultant or something to fast-track this thing and make it happen, I would, I would certainly support that. And I'm, of course, very happy that resolution serial number twenty-one thirty was approved, and it certainly shows the hard work, I think of councilperson Sullivan Leonard, working with a group that she knows a little bit about, to make that happen, and I would certainly encourage the city council, and anybody listening at this point, to, if there are groups in need, you know, get ahold of us, let's make this happen, and, and let's, let's do everything that we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
As Troy said, I will reiterate, Wasi came to every council meeting, and not one time did they ever say, and I'm over at Wasi just about every Friday, nobody ever said anything to me. And being out in the community, and, and being friends with a lot of the small business people, nobody has said anything to me about needing any more money. When all this first started, we was locked down five weeks, and then, the money came from the state and the borough, and as well as the city. I, and at that time, I was not, I didn't have a business in the city, but, I did in the, it's in the borough, and I got money from the state and the borough. And so, with the money that I got, we did quite well. When he said on, whatever date it was, it was something like the third of May, I believe, he said, you can open up and go back to work. We opened up and went back to work, and didn't skip a beat. That was in the hair salon. Now, what the others did, I don't know, but then, the unemployment started, everybody got money, and so, everybody was spending money, and they still are till today. Our sales tax attached to that, that the ones that are paying sales tax, their business is doing okay. So, where these others are, I don't know why, they have not come forward, or not said anything, because people, some people, anyway, know that we did have extra money. And in my opinion, with this next wave of COVID coming, then, these at-home test kits is gonna be very valuable to everybody, not just a business, or not just a daycare, but it's gonna be to everybody, because it costs money to get a test now. So, in my humble opinion, that we work with Matsu Health Foundation to get as many of these home test kits as we can, because they can and do and will distribute. So I think we need to look at that. I mean, I'm waiting on Elizabeth to call me back, so is Troy, and we will discuss that with them. And then, Troy, if he can get a, a response from the AG about the business help, or whatever, you know, it's not that we want to keep this money or give it back, because let's face it, tell me what, when the state has given us anything, how long's it been? We stand on our own, and so, that's standing on our own, we don't rely on the state, and we have done quite well, because the city is totally out of debt, no thanks to the state. So therefore, what we are doing, trying to get rid of this, I just think that we may have to send some back, and if we do, we're not alone, there is other places that are sending money back. So, that's it, thank you for your time. If there's nothing further to come before this council, we are adjourned at seven thirty-eight.
James, are we?
House left.